It is six o'clock and on behalf of the City of Independence, we will call this Planning Commission meeting on March 26 to order. And first, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for those of you who are familiar with the meetings, we will, if anybody would like to speak tonight, we ask that you stand up and get sworn in. And we will give those that come to speak for or against the cases a chance to speak if they would like to. So before I do the swearing in, let's do our roll call. I like to do things out of order, it keeps you busy.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Present.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Here.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Present.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Here.
And Chairman McLean.
Here. Thank you. Okay, would all of those who will be speaking tonight, if you're an applicant or speaking for or against a case, please stand and raise your right hand. Oh, this is gonna be fast. Do you swear to tell the whole truth before this commission? If so, say I do.
I do.
Thank you. You may be seated. Okay, first on our agenda is the consent agenda. Did everybody have a chance to look at the minutes and make sure they're correct?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
All right, is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Yes.
And Chairman McLean.
Yes. The consent agenda has passed. The next item on our list is a continued case, 24-400-04, short-term rental for 120 East College Street, has a request to be continued to April 9th. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we continue case 24-400-04 to the April 9th meeting.
Thank you, is there a second?
I second.
Ooh, she is on it tonight. And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Yes.
And Chairman McLean.
Yes. Case number 24-400-04, short-term rental at 120 East College Street, will be continued until the April 9th, I just lost my place, 9th meeting, thank you. Okay, our first public hearing is a continued case, number 24-100-05, rezoning of 1301 South Nolan Road. Staff, will you give us a report?
Okay, this is, was a case to rezone a C2 property on, at 1301 South Nolan Road to R6. The applicant is Carolyn Richardson. And as you can see on the vicinity map, that's where that light is, at Fair and Nolan Road, near the McDonald's. The originally scheduled public hearing for this case was on January 23rd, 2024. Currently, the property is being utilized as a single-family home with an applicant living at the property and operating as a home business. Rezoning this property from C2 to R6 will correct code violations currently on hold pending the outcome of this rezoning. Prior to the originally scheduled public hearing, the applicant decided to sell the property as C2 zoning and locate her residence and business elsewhere. A request has been made to the staff to withdraw the case rather than to be rezoned. Staff informed the applicant that if the case is withdrawn, the applicant will be in violation of the city code by residing at the property's own C2 general, general, that should be general commercial, which does not allow for residential uses. Also, we need fence on the property, would need to follow the commercial fence regulations by requiring a permit and meeting the UDO Section 14402 for commercial fences and locations. With this in mind, the applicant requested that the application be continued while the property was listed for sale. At the January 23rd, 2024 Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission voted to continue the case to the February 27th, 2024 meeting. At the February 27th, 2024 meeting, the case was again continued by the commission to the March 26th, 2024 meeting. The applicant has been unable to sell the subject property in this timeframe. For this reason, the applicant is requesting an additional continuance. As outlined in Section 14707 of the Unified Development Ordinance, 14709 of the Unified Development Ordinance, further continuances of this case require a majority vote of the hearing body present at the meeting. The record will, quote, "The record will indicate a reason for the continuance and any stipulations or conditions placed on the continuance if the body deems it appropriate." Staff does not recommend granting a continuance in this case. However, if the Planning Commission wishes to continue the case, staff recommends the following. The case shall only be continued for one additional continuance to a date certain. At that date, the public hearing shall be heard. Number two, the case shall be continued to the next available meeting on April the 9th, 2024.
Oh, you're done?
Yeah, that's all I want to do right now.
Okay. Um, okay. Yeah, let's have the applicant come up and kind of talk to us, fill us in a little more on what you're hoping and wishing for. We need you to state your whole name and your address. And you can put that up top because you're.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Commission members, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Terrell Walls. I am the broker-owner of Walls Real Estate Company. And my brokerage was hired by Mrs. Richardson to market her property, which of course, as the senior planner suggested, it is a commercially zoned property. She's decided to sell and to sell the property in its present zoning, which is commercial, which of course is a substantial value greater selling commercially than residentially. She had initially filed for rezoning and then she decided that she wanted to just move. And so she retained me. And so there was, I had several conversations personally with city staff. And the city staff initially told me that there was absolutely no problem, they would just continue it on until she finds a buyer. Well, it's commercial, commercial properties don't sell overnight. And so it's been listed month and a half or so, and it hasn't sold yet, confident that it's gonna sell. But my client, she received an email dated, it looks like March 18th of 24, well, no, that's not it, she received on January 6th, or 16th of 2024, that says, hello, Ms. Richardson, I spoke with my supervisor, Rick Arroyo, about the best way to proceed. He suggested to simply continue or postpone the application until you have sold the property. The reasoning behind his thought is that by living in the property, you are technically in violation of our code. As long as you have an application to rezone to an appropriate zoning, we can hold off on the code enforcement, withdrawing the application would entirely remove that protection. And so she has elected to withdraw the application so that she could sell the property at its present zoning. And again, we are more than confident, it's a great location, great lot size, the property's gonna sell, there's no question about that. And of course, if I had a crystal ball to tell when we'd get it sold, well, I'd have all the listings. But I have no such crystal ball, but we're prayerful that this commission would give us the time needed to get our property sold.
If you had that crystal ball, you would be beyond loved in this world. Okay.
Madam Chair, what's your address? You didn't state that.
1301.
His address.
Yeah, you both have to, for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's all right.
I'm at 4010 Sterling Avenue, and that is Kansas City, Missouri, 64133.
Okay, I usually say that for the record.
Yes, sir.
Now, if you'll state your name and your address.
I am Carolyn Richardson, and my address is the address in question, 1301 South Nolan Road, Independence, Missouri, 64055.
Okay, thank you. And you were gonna say?
I will agree with Mr. Harper. I have been in this property since 2019. There was another gentleman that worked in a position that Joshua Garrett, is he in? His name was Mike Stewart, had a brain loss. Prior to purchasing the property, I met with Mr. Stewart, I'm told that he's retired. But I met with him, I had the understanding that as long as I held a business license, I can live in the property, it was never an issue. During this entire time that I've been in this property, I was told one time that I was in non-compliance, it was about two years ago, because I hold a state business license and I didn't have the City of Independence business license. I didn't know I needed the City of Independence. So I acquired commercial insurance and I was granted the city business license. So moving forward, two years later, October, Mr. Ferris decides that I am in non-compliant, what is it, what's the word? I'm not in compliance. Mr. Frazier and I went back and forth and back and forth, it got a little ugly there for a minute, and I don't understand how I wake up in October and I'm suddenly in non-compliance. There has been numerous tens of thousands of dollars put into this property, about 60, 61,000 of rehab. The company that did most of the rehab is the Independence Habitat for Resource. With that said, all of the permits that was granted through the Habitat was all residential. Every time I personally tried to do something with this property to upgrade it, that was one promise that I had made to Mr. Stewart, is that I had to put a fence to separate me from the house that was behind me. And if you look all up and down Nolan Road where the businesses are, there's wooden fences, with the exception of the car wash, theirs is a white vinyl fence. But most of them is wooden fences behind them. That's what I was told that I had to do. And I've successfully done it, he gave me enough time to get that done. And since then, it's now just been one issue after another. We started the fence project conversations in July. I was told all I needed was a stamp plans in order to move forward with the fence. That cost me 20, almost $2,900 to do the stamp plans. I submitted that the first week of August, never got the permit, it's just turned into a nightmare, on top of constantly telling me that I'm in non-compliance. When Mr. Frazier, one of the city people in the office, when he looked at all the other permits that was approved under residential, the reason I'm not angry is because he actually apologized. And I believe his apology was genuine. So he commented to Mr. Garrett and said, you know, what does it say on her property? Mr. Garrett agreed, it says zone C2, then why did you give her residential permits? Nobody can seem to answer that, but anyone else other than me, the owner, can get permits on this property. When I started doing the fence in the backyard, because of all of the things that put my life in danger, I only agreed to do the backyard, we just removed the original fence and put a six-foot fence there to try to give me some kind of protection from finding needles and all kinds of things in my backyard. I didn't think I was doing anything wrong. And it's just been, Mr. Ferris said that we're gonna do whatever they could to make the situation right, but their words versus the actions is not adding up. And I'm just, you know, I need to feel safe where I am.
So what is your ultimate goal? Do you want to withdraw? Do you want to try to continue it one more time? Do you want, what is your ultimate goal?
I have, we're stuck between a rock and a hard place.
Right.
With the fence not being completed, all the people that are calling, inquiring about the property is wondering why is the fence not completed? So if I wanna sell the property, I have to complete the fence. I didn't pay $2,700 or $2,900 to have the boundary survey done to put the fence in the backyard. I was actually trying to bring the fence up to the front to protect the property and protect myself. Ultimately, what I would like to have done, I need a continuance, but I need a reasonable amount of time, not 30 to 40 days, to try to sell the property. I have no problem selling the property, but I would like to sell it at the C2 zoning. And if I cannot get it sold within a certain amount of time, then yes, we can move forward with rezoning, I'm okay with that, but I just, I want the opportunity to try to sell it as commercial. Because anybody buys it, they're gonna turn it to commercial anyway.
So staff, I might need help with an explanation, because I'm getting myself confused, which is really easy. What would be the difference between a withdrawal and a continuance for her?
So withdrawal of the case would put the applicant subject to the violations of the code.
And it wouldn't with a continuance?
A continuance would just continue.
But we only have until April 9th.
Yeah, two weeks.
That is what staff suggests, this body can choose a different date.
I love choices.
Can I just add one little thing?
Yeah.
I'm not trying to throw the City of Independence under the bus. They've done everything they could to try to rectify some of this. I can't understand how I went from 2019, everybody knows me in the office, I don't have to announce myself, they all know me. But how did I go from 2019 to October of '23, and then suddenly I'm in non-compliance? I was told that I could stay there, I have a business license, I do a lot of volunteer work, I'm not understanding this. So now we're in this situation that we can continue it, but if the house hadn't sold in all this time, which was only a couple of weeks, I don't, there's no offer on the table right now, so you're not giving me a fair enough amount of time. I'm for rezoning if I cannot sell it, I'm in agreement with it, but give me the chance to sell it first.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Could I ask the city staff, where's the fire? What's the problem? Why is the staff taking this stance? I just wanna know.
So the applicant, Ms. Richardson, so she's actually living in the property, as a residential property, and that's really the crux of the problem. I mean, the fence is another issue, but the applicant can't live, it's a, she's living in it as a residential property. It can be used as commercial property, there can be permits for it as a commercial property, there can be, you know, improvements to the property as a commercial property, but you can't live there as a resident.
That's, that's not really helping me out any.
If that's the violation.
It's tangled.
It's tangled. Yes.
Even though I was told prior to buying it that I can live there, and I have been there, and I've done a lot of rehab, it was a distressed property.
What harm is she causing by living in a commercial property that looks like a house?
Well, the problem is I can't pick and choose, I mean, we have to follow the code. As officers of the city, we have to follow the code.
I see.
So it's not a matter of what harm may be by doing it, it's a matter of following the code.
Yeah, go ahead.
You're not following code. I mean, let's, let's look at the issue with the roof, when the roof was replaced.
Wait a minute, ma'am, wait a minute, let's, let's, I understand that, let's back up here a second first, before you get tired by listening to everything you put down. You got everything in documents, what you did, what, everything in documents and everything?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, now, so basically, we're just here to say about zoning. My question to you, since you're a violation of codes, you have to go to codes and then you're gonna have to go to court. This is probably gonna be a legal matter that's gonna have to go to the courts to go on. My suggestion to you is that you withdraw your case and then take it up before the legal matters of the City of Independence, because all, so all we can do is say yes on zone or no on zone, and that's what we're here to vote on. And I know it's not what, we can't really change what's happened on the codes. I mean, we, the codes are in the city statute, so you have to go by the codes. You can bring it up to a judge and let the judge decide whether the city did something wrong by letting you stay there or not letting you stay there, but that's gonna be up to the judge, that's not gonna be up to us. So that's why it's probably best if you just resend your application and move forward on the code problems, since they already issued you permits as residential. So that's where you're probably gonna have to go to the judge and do it that way through a legal matter, because if we decide something here, it could still go through a legal matter through the judge, through the city. So that's my recommendation to you as that. Don't say and try to give us all this information you've done to it, because it's not gonna make any difference to us, we're here to recommend the rezone or not rezone. So that way, I'm just trying to get you the proper way to do this, you probably need to go to legal portions. That's what I suggest.
So, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
So I guess, you know, a judge would be the only person that can issue, say, a stay. So the minute, based on, you know, the conversations that I've had with Mr. Arroyo and Mr. Garrett, my understanding was they were just completely amenable to just pushing this thing back until the property is sold. So, but for some reason, all of a sudden, there's this great fire, you know, to, I'm sorry, excuse me, to execute kind of judgment, you know, and remove everything that they promised, for some reason, unbeknownst to my client, for some reason, it's like, right now, right now, right now, when the minute she rescinds her application, next he'll be over with the sheriff trying to sit her things out on the street and then making her homeless, completely and greatly exacerbating the problem. So it's kind of like this vexatious game of whack-a-mole. The minute my client, you know, she resolves one issue, she's sitting there with the fence half-done because they didn't keep their words on that, and then, and so now, they've decided that they're not gonna support even, you know, continuing, they'd rather her, well, they don't even want her to remove it right now, they just want you guys to go ahead and change the zoning, irregardless to what she wants to do.
Well, that, that's why I'm saying, that's why I recommend to her, we'll do, if she wants us to go ahead, we can go ahead, but then it's gonna devalue the property. And if you, and if you say, if you say rescind it, it'll stay at C2. I mean, we don't have probably any problems with rezoning to residential, the problem is like, say, it's gonna bring the value down.
Yes, sir. And the thing was, she wanted to keep.
That's what you guys said, yes.
Keep it C2.
Yes. I mean, I recommend you keep it C2, too, that's why I say just resend it, and then if you wanna try to stay there, you go bring it up to legal matters, because code will co-enforce it, you'll get a date with the judge, and then you'll have to do it all at that time. That's what I recommend. Is that correct, Rick? They'll get something like that.
Or we continue it.
That would be the process.
Yeah, that would be the process, and then you can continue it there also if you need to, but that's, I'd say, because you're getting more into legal matters. All we can decide whether to change to C, from C2 to residential, that's about all we can decide here.
Or we can continue it.
Or continue it, but like I said, according to our statutes, we continue as much as we're supposed to continue a case.
Okay, so again, I would like a continuance to give me time, which is what was initially promised to me, to sell the property. I'm okay with selling it. If I cannot get it sold by a certain time, two weeks is not enough time. So if I can't get it sold within a certain amount of time, then I will not argue or push back or anything as far as changing it to residential, but just give me the opportunity to try to sell it.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we continue case 24-100-05 for three months.
What did you say?
We continue the case 24-100-05 for three months.
I second.
Okay, so there we go, we got a motion.
You're reading my mind, this is scary.
Thank you so much.
Okay, well, we'll have to go through the rest of our stuff here, so.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We stay here, right?
Yeah, you stay right there, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, we have, a motion is second, I think I want to make sure that this is, okay, did you hear the motion?
We don't have it on there yet.
The motion is to, that we want to continue the case for, you got one right there, three months.
Are you asking me if you can do that? Sure.
Sure, thank you. Just asking your, your expert opinion. Thank you.
Well, I thought we're, I thought we're in violation if we went past the 9th.
We are, but we can make a decision on our own.
So are you gonna get us in trouble, Rick, or are we okay?
No, the, as, as you mentioned, so the body can continue it, and so that basically puts all the violations on hold until the case is heard.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's fair. I mean, I'm sorry, I know this isn't.
No, that's fine.
But she's here, we've got a good explanation, I think all of us understand what's happening.
So we don't have the exact date, because we don't have that on the schedule, but it would probably be the second meeting of June.
You know, I haven't opened it up to the public yet.
No, you still, you still have to, oh, yeah, you have to open it up.
Yeah, so before we can entertain that motion.
Well, we already got the motion, but you gotta get comments.
Yeah. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Hearing none. We have a motion on the floor for continuing the case for three months. We have a second, is there any discussion?
Rick, the only thing I'm asking now is to make sure it's gotta be a majority vote, or it's gotta be.
Has to be majority vote.
Majority, okay.
And I would probably specify the second meeting in June, we will end up advertising it again anyway.
Okay.
For that time, so I don't have the exact date in front of me, but if you specify three months with a second meeting in June, we can.
Okay, that seems like to me gives them enough time to maybe get somebody to buy. I mean, that's another three months, so, okay.
Then I promise, I won't, second week of June, I won't argue that we have to switch it to residential.
All right, I'm gonna close the public portion of this hearing.
Wait a minute, we're not done yet.
So just my quick comment, too, that I just wanna say out loud is, I think that it's great that we can decide case by case how these go. I know this is not normal code, but I think for this property in this situation, because it is kind of tangled, and it's a, it is a house in the middle of C2, which is, and it's weird, it's just weird. So I think that we, as a case by case situation, I feel good about this decision. So with that, anybody else? And we'll take a vote.
Who was the second?
I was.
Okay.
Yes.
Commissioner. Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal?
Yes.
Commissioner H. Wiley?
Yes.
And Sherma McLean?
Yes. Case number 24-100-05, rezoning of 1301 South Nolan Road, has been approved with...
It's been continued.
Continued, has been continued until...
Second meeting of June.
Second, Tuesday in June.
Second meeting of June or three months.
Second meeting, okay. Okay, thank you.
We can leave now, Rick?
Yes.
No, why don't you?
It's the worst.
Okay, next case is case number 24-100-08, rezoning at 9519 East Truman Road. Staff, give us a report, please.
This is a rezoning case for a single-family residence, um, on Truman Road, just a little west of the Pizza Hut, that's there at Truman, at the southwest corner of Truman and Winter Road. Uh, the applicant's April Monti, and this is to rezone the property that's zoned C2 and R12 to R6, okay? Single family. And so here's the zoning map, if you can see the, the blue outlined area, it's the, it's the long skinny lot heading to the south there, um, between, in the middle of the block. And here you can see the shape a little better, and its location within, um, an area that the comprehensive plan conceived as, of as mixed use. And an aerial photograph of the same location. And then this is the notification map of all the surrounding properties abutting this very deep, um, property that goes into the middle of the block there, so, between Glenwood and, and Winter Road. Background, the applicant recently purchased this dilapidated and vacant commercial and residential property, and wants to rezone, to permit the property be, to be rehabilitated for residential use. The north, um, 225 feet of this, um, 570-foot-deep lot is currently Zone C2, general commercial, and the remainder of the lot is zoned R12, two-family residential. A vacant house and, and, and a usable accessory structure and a portion of a dilapidated structure on the portion, northern portion, that happens to be zoned commercial. And then the remainder of the property, that is the majority of the property on the south, is the portion that's zoned R12 currently, and has numerous dilapidated structures and other materials on there. Apparently in the past, machine shop existed on this property, in contemporary times, the site has been used to store assorted items. Necessary improvements for a building permit, although there, we can't put conditions on the rezoning, when they would get a building permit, these are some of the things they'll need to be doing. The applicant will need to take care of three major issues before a building permits are issued. Uh, first, the property will need to be rezoned, of course, as we're talking about right now, to, um, to the single-family district. Um, second, a gravel driveway must be paved, and any portion of the driveway that's also dirt or gravel not improved would need to be eliminated, if not improved. Uh, third, except for the northernmost accessory building, all the other accessory structures, which are dilapidated and commercial in nature, will need to be removed. Additionally, all code violation issues will need to be addressed, or enforcement actions will need to be initiated. As far as the physical characteristics of the property, the subject property sits on higher ground to the south of Truman Road, at the top of an embankment approximately 50 feet off the roadway, and it sits there, it's currently a two-story pink house. Accesses the property via the existing gravel driveway along the east side of the property that passes to the house and then wraps around, uh, the backside, leading to a loop that is not improved, but simply a dirt-looped road, and is flanked by commercial and industrial buildings and sheds. Large shade trees are spaced throughout the property. As far as the characteristics of the area, Truman Road corridor across the street to the north, and particularly going east, has been commercial for a long time. Of course, the high school, Van Horn, lies to the northeast across the intersection from Truman and, uh, Winter Road intersection. Many of the brick and wood, are brick and wooden buildings, most with very little setback from the road, and they've been there for decades. Buildings to the north were either built or modified for automotive uses, the blocks immediately to the west and northwest along Truman Road are either sort of underdeveloped or contain, uh, single-family residences. Uh, single-family lots flank on the west and the south and the east sides of the property as it goes back into the block. As far as the request, the applicant seeks to have the property zoned to R6, single-family residential, so the property containing a house, um, that currently contains a house with two zonings, can be rehabilitated for use, um, for single-family uses. Whereas the analysis goes, consistency with the independence for all strategic plan. Uh, rezoning this property is consistent with the independence for all strategic plan. An application is within keeping with the measures of success for improved housing conditions. Comprehensive plan guiding land use principles. Uh, the comprehensive plan envisions the future land use of this property and the surrounding area to be mixed uses. Historic and archaeological sites, there are no apparent historic or, historic or archaeological issues with this property. As far as public utilities, all utilities are present, in or adjacent, in the right-of-way, and CIP improvements, currently there are no CIP investments in the area. Going through the review criteria, recommendations and decisions on special use permit app, okay, that was, that's an error, on rezoning applications, must be based on the consideration of the following criteria. Number one, conformance, uh, of the requested zoning with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan envisions the area to be mixed use, however, rezoning would support a continued attempt to reverse the creation of the stripped-out commercial on the corridor, and instead encouraging the, the commercial to be concentrated at the intersections. Number two, conformance, um, of the requested zoning within the adopted neighborhood or sub-area plan which the property is located or abuts. The property is located within the Truman, Winter Road, sub-area plan area. Uh, number three, the compatibility of the proposed zoning with the zoning and use of nearby property, including any overlay zoning. If we zone the property, we'd be congruent with, uh, the neighboring, actually, the neighboring areas to the southeast and west are, are 12, but would be similar in use, being Number four, the compatibility of the proposed zoning and allowed use with the character of the neighborhood, uh, the existing character of the surrounding neighborhood that is, is that of a single-family residential neighborhood. Number five, the suitability of the subject property for uses to which it has been restricted under the existing zoning regulations. With the current zoning in place, the existing single-family along Truman Road is not permitted, by rezoning the entirety of the property to R6, uh, the applicant will be able to use the property for residential use, protect the house particularly, that already exists residentially. Uh, number seven, uh, the length of time the subject property has remained vacant, vacant as zoned, uh, the property, both the residential and commercial parts of it, um, have sat vacant for a number of years. And number seven, the extent to which approving the rezoning will be detrimental to nearby properties. Rezoning this property to R6 will not have a detrimental effect on nearby properties, this is because the residential use of the property will not be all that different from what already exists, has, exists there before, as far as the house there by the street, and currently exists in the surrounding neighborhood. And, uh, number eight, the gain, if any, to the public health, safety, and welfare, due to denial of the application, as compared to the hardship imposed upon the landowner, if any, because of the denial of the application. Uh, denial of this rezoning would prevent the property from being used at all, because you cannot have two zonings on the same property and be issued a building permit in order to rehab the property. So, here's looking at the house of, that's up on the hill, above the embankment, above, uh, Truman Road there. That's looking back toward Van Horn to the east of Truman. And this is that Pizza Hut that's immediately to the east there, between, uh, Winter Road and the property. This is the, other, other businesses that are across the street from this property. And this shows the properties further to the west, going down Truman Road. This is the driveway to the east of the house, and then where it wraps around to the backside. And then this is looking a little bit more southwest, so you can see the back of the house, the fairly, um, new, um, accessory building slash garage, and then the dilapidated structures that are south of that. Staff recommends approval of this rezoning, and we're, I'm ready to take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions at staff?
Ma'am Chair?
Yes.
Uh, are we sure there's no CIP projects down over there? I thought there was one coming down Winter Road and Truman there or something.
I would have to go back and review the CIP, I, I don't have that information, sorry.
Okay. Well, I just, I thought, I remember hearing one come up about that, if I'm sure.
I don't remember.
That's all.
Ma'am Chair?
Yes.
Just a question, so I understand. There is made mention of necessary improvements for a building permit. Why weren't some of those improvements made, uh, to be conditions for zoning as well?
We cannot condition zoning legally.
Thank you.
From what I understand.
Okay, are we ready for the applicant to come up? Okay, will the applicant come forward and state your name and address?
Uh, like my home address?
Yes.
Know what you mean? Uh, my name is Dan Steiner.
Ma'am Chair?
Yes.
Did he swear in?
Did you swear in?
No, 'cause I didn't know the process, I didn't know exactly what you guys were doing, I was like, uh, it's like I was telling her earlier, uh, I need to be held by the hand and walk through things sometimes, 'cause I'm like, what are you guys doing?
Sometimes it's just baptism. Raise your right hand.
Yeah.
Do you swear to tell the whole truth before this commission? If so, say I do.
I do.
Thank you. Now will you say your name and your address?
Okay, my name is Dan Steiner, and my address is 404 Northeast Fox Trail Drive, Blue Springs, Missouri.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, so, I mean, uh, the, the goal when I bought this property was to, um, turn it into like a business, I do remodeling here in Independence, do a lot of it, um, and then I came into zoning issues, obviously, and so, uh, the goal was that we were going to use the buildings to store our equipment, and because the zoning was slashed, right, I mean, if you saw a picture of it, the zoning changes through the middle of the first outbuilding, and it's all commercial on the house. So I, I then hired a commercial, uh, contractor to do the commercial, so we could just get the power on, so we could start evaluating, is this gonna be worth actually rehabbing or not? I mean, you know, until you get lights on and you can pull some stuff apart, it could just be, let's bulldoze it. Um, so, we haven't been able to touch the property, when, when Eric asked, how come some stuff wasn't done prior, uh, trust me, I, I like to get started, I like to get working and doing stuff, there's a lot I wanna do, but since I bought the property, the person that I bought it from still has everything on the property, uh, and that was supposed to all be taken with them, and because of my niceness, I've allowed it to happen for over a year, for a year now. So I've, I've, the last text message was, this is time, I'm, I'm ready to come get zoned, so the, the, the latest goal was, because of the two zoning, I don't know, I, they have so many different rules that they made 20 or 30 years ago that now seem like, it's like, is that really a big deal? But it, I understand we have to follow it formally. So, the last goal was, let's just change it all to residential, I'll just rehab the house, somebody will love to live there, if it was me, I would love to put my hot rods in these, he calls them dilapidated buildings, but if you go look at them, they're very usable, they have garages on each end, there may be a few things that need to be fixed here and there, but they're savable buildings, they're, they're very functional, they have all kinds of equipment in them, uh, currently, um, and I plan on fixing all that. And then, if a person wanted to store their hot rods in these buildings, I mean, in this outbuilding, and it, it's a beautiful property, if you were to actually walk it, you would say this is worth saving. That's, I walked it, I'm like, I wanna save this property, I wanna spend some money making it look good again. Uh, I'm from Independence, so, uh, I, I love buying houses here, I love fixing things up here, um, but this has been a stumbling block. I bought this a year ago, and I'm still trying to just get the zoning changed so I can get inside and turn the lights on, that's all I'm trying to do right now. So, um, if you can help me get the lights on, we can make this property look pretty again, and, uh, like I do every other property I do.
Commissioners, any questions? How many buildings are behind the house?
Uh, so, if you counted what's down the middle, there's like a, like some kind of little shack there, that I'm gonna, I'm gonna bulldoze that and get rid of all that stuff, and clean it up again right there, but there is one major big building that, I don't know if you can go to the next slide, I think it was on your next one, no, go the other direction. So, you can see the big metal building here. There's this one right here, and in between this, you have this building all the way to here, it's one gigantic building, and you have two garage doors on each end, and it used to be two separate buildings, but they opened it up, and so now it's one, when you could drive a car in and drive all the way in and back out again. There's obviously some things that need to be fixed on it, but it's a, it's not a tear it down type of building, it's really not. Um, I, trust me, I've, I've had to, I don't know if you ever, you probably saw 1620 Appleton, that thing was on the dangerous building list, and we brought that thing back to life, and so, I will bring it back to life, I, 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 this wasn't something that he told me when I came to do the zoning, that I would have to tear that building down, uh, to get it, to get it rezoned, I probably would be just selling the property to somebody that's gonna just let it be... that's going to just let it be nothing again. I mean, because that's what it's been. But I, I really plan on doing something. I don't, I, you know, I don't know that I can afford the asphalt. I mean, if you see the drive, the drive starts. You had another picture, but it, it comes up to the house here, and then the rest of this is like a dirt path that goes all the way around the circle block. It makes it really, really pretty. And then the back part of, of in-between all the houses, and I think they lived there, is another like acre that you could let your dogs go run. I mean, it's just, it's pretty. If I, if I was going to stay and live in Independence, I would love to live up on the hill like that and have all this property with the buildings to put stuff, that I like to, I like to collect stuff, so. But I don't know, if I have to tear that building down as a condition of this, I don't know what this is all for then, to be honest.
We can ask again, and the paving part is probably a gotta-do.
Yeah, well, you're talking about paving.
I was going to answer the...
500 feet of asphalt.
Currently, those buildings are on a dangerous building registry.
All of them?
Yes, the ones in the rear.
Okay.
The houses, not the, not the buildings.
If I understood it correctly, I believe it was...
The buildings still have electricity on. I mean, how they can be, how would you have electricity on in a dangerous building?
We don't distinguish between one part of the building or the other, it's the entire structures. And again, this has nothing to do with this case.
That's what I'm saying, that has nothing to do with rezoning, that'd be with dangerous buildings.
Right.
They'll have to do the inspection, well, you have to get your inspections and take it off the dangerous buildings. That's what, that would be the only thing there.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, if anybody else wants to, no, no, not him. Not doing it.
Do you? All right, thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Come on up. If you'll state your name and your address, please.
Thank you. My name's Brian Carney. We live at 9725 East Winter Road, Independence, in Independence, Missouri's historical home, number 26 on the Historical Register for Independence. We, my wife and I, we were born and raised in Independence, and we moved to Dallas for 26 years. When it came time for us to retire, we wanted to come back home because I have 10 brothers and sisters that live in this area. We looked for a home, and we found this historic home on Winter Road that we absolutely loved, and we purchased it back in 2017. At the time we purchased that home, both the property in question, the property on the south of us, and the property on the north of us, were all vacant. Fortunately, in the last three years, both properties on the north and the south have been rehabilitated, have great neighbors, they're taken care of. This property behind us has been empty for seven years. And we've dealt with all kinds of pro, you know, issues, people on the property that were unwanted, we've had to call the police, numerous times. We worry, being an empty structure, about fire as they go in there and they try to stay warm. And it's happened several areas around us. We're really trying to support the Englewood community. It's one of you turn up on Winter Road and come down Truman Road, it's one of the first things you see when you turn up to go into Englewood. We really, really support having it residential. As far as the buildings go in the back, we're 100% for them being residential. We, we really don't want a commercial development back there. If someone has got their own private cars or something, that's fine, but no residential. And I would have to extremely disagree with the thought that he has to asphalt that driveway. Alls you have to do is drive around the city, anywhere you go. You can go two houses up on the left-hand side, and there's a guy that lives in a home right on Winter Road that's probably got eight to 10 people living in that house. They have a concrete driveway. But since he's got eight to 10 cars, the whole side of the, the driveway is nothing but mud because he's parking all his cars. Go up Liberty, North Liberty by St. Mary's Church around there. There's people got 10 cars parked in their front yard, and they're on unimproved surfaces. This is at least, you know, it's got gravel. It's not hurting anybody, that it's not paved. That's just an additional expense that they really don't need. It's a beautiful property, just like he says. We see deer back there. Part of it, the very back where the fence is, probably half of it is just a green space. It's, it's a wonderful property, it makes somebody a really, really nice home. As far as the CIPs go, our house is, was a CIP. We have a tax abatement on our home, so I know there was one in the area at one time. The house next door to us, it's not on the, the historical property such as ours, but the, the Independence Historical Commission made the people put $30,000 worth of new windows in it just to, even to be able to rehab it. And that, you know, it didn't make any sense to me at all, but they did it, and it's, they sold it, and it's great, you know? So we just want to say that we really support that being a residential property, and the sooner the better, because it's nothing going to do but help the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here who would like to speak for it, please? Is there anyone here who would like to speak? You can't speak. Commissioners, any more questions? Commissioners, any questions of the staff? Or I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve case 24-100-08, 9519 East Truman Road.
Second.
And are we ready for a vote? Oops, sorry, forgot to turn my mic on.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner H. Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal?
Yes.
And Sherma McLean?
Yes. Case number 24-100-08, rezoning at 9519 East Truman Road, has been approved. Good luck, and thank you for taking care of properties and improving Truman. Okay. Roundtable. Next meeting is April 9th. Anything else?
I don't have anything else for this commission. I was going to ask, answer some questions that Laura Dean had, but she's not here today.
Oh.
But that's all I got.
Okay. I think that we have asked Rick to, or this, and the staff to look into just short-term rental, things we may or may not need to get ahead of before FIPA or some of the other big events come our way so that we make sure we're making the best decisions for the city, for the greater good. So I know he's looking into that. That's it. All right, this meeting is adjourned at 6:59 PM.